Good evening, welcome to the July 11, 2022, meeting of the Washington Town Council. We, I am pleased to be back. I missed seeing everybody last month, and I appreciate your indulgence in letting me go out, but I am back safely now. And the first thing we have is the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I so move.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second it.
All right, I think I heard Brad first. So Brad, are there any questions or additions or deletions? Yes, ma'am?
I have one addition after B. The public hearing regarding zoning fees, we should add discussion and possible vote. That would make that C, and then D. That's my only change.
All right, any other? Then we'll have a roll call vote. Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
I was not at the meeting, so I will abstain.
Yes. Oh, I thought you had an addition for the agenda.
I'm sorry, I was doing the minutes. I am so sorry. You obviously can't let me out of town. So we do have, I'm sorry, we do have, before we have the roll call vote, we do have an addition to the agenda, and that is under new business, I'd like to put B, which is an extension of sewer to the Washington Volunteer Fire and Rescue Site. So I apologize. This is the second time in a row that I've done this. I've done the minutes before the agenda. I apologize. Now, with that a change, is that approved with you as the motion maker?
That's fine.
Brad, are you all right with that as the second, to have that added?
Yes.
All right. Now, with the amended agenda, please roll call vote again, Brad.
Yes.
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 All right. Thank you very much. I apologize again. All right, minutes. Now we can do the minutes from the June 13 meeting. Motion to approve the minutes.
I so move.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. Roll call vote to approve the minutes. Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Mayor's report. I will be very brief since we've got a full schedule for today. I just want to provide a sincere statement of thanks to Mr. Whitehead for agreeing to be the Vice Mayor and to Gail Swift for chairing the June Town Council meeting. I was deeply appreciative of both those actions. That is all of my report at this time. The treasurer's report.
Thank you. You have it in front of you. No comments except that this is year end, but this is unaudited on anything, so this is probably pretty close as far as I can tell, but it is not the final audited year-end report. That's it.
And bills to be paid?
We don't do that anymore.
Because we're doing the three-month or whatever it is? All right. Mr. Krim?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to let you know that Ms. Batson and I have been working on the water and sewer ordinance because I was looking at the update to the fees for TAP and availability. The recent parts of that ordinance are 20 years old at this point. I think it's time for the council to look into updating the water and sewer ordinances. Understand that you may have a consultant already that would be ready, willing, and able to assist you with that. I think that's going to be a stitch in time for you. If we can get that work done in a timely fashion, then you should be able to avoid problems down the road.
All right. Thank you for that good counsel. Mr. Guyerson?
Thank you, Mayor.
Steve, if you don't mind going to the microphone? I try to get at least one thing right.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. You all have a copy of my report in your agenda, and I have also begun providing it to the Planning Commission so they can see what I'm up to. We've got quite a bit of activity with the Planning Commission, with applications that they'll be hearing. But I think the most important thing, just to point out to each of you, is that we have site plans under review that we've been looking for for the past few months, and those site plans are something that I'll take a very close look at, as well as others that we have looking at. So Rush River, of course, the post office, the adios, parking annex or parking court, those will be ones we'll be looking at next few days. So site plans are an important thing. They're available at the town office if you want to look at them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Public Works Committee, I don't know who to turn to for this.
But we're not next to each other. It's a lot harder than you know, Frank.
Well, we've done a lot in this past week, and I'm going to let Barbara update the numbers because she has a better handle on those than our water meter installations.
I'm very happy to do this update. As of today, 64 meters have gone in. Yay team. At the end of this week, I expect all water meters that do not require extra work to be put in place. There are some that will require coming back to do digging around the meter. It's not just a simple switch out. So if all goes well and Mother Nature cooperates, we'll have them all in, which is a month ahead of schedule.
That's great. Wonderful.
Thank you for coordinating that. That was a nightmare.
And we have to give thanks to Atrium. Those folks really work quickly, efficiently. They're just a fantastic contractor for the town.
Right.
So we hope to do a lot more with them. The other part of putting all these meters in is tomorrow. Are we still on schedule for that?
On morning.
9:00 AM.
The antenna will be mounted. We'll be looking at that on the building here, which is the central point for communication of all the meters. And Barbara will start working with the Zenner folks to start bringing that network up. Originally, we thought it would only be a few meters, but now we're going to have a plethora of meters to integrate in rapid order. And this will allow us to start getting our readings over the radio network. So that's going to be a big help. And then as that data comes in, we should be able to actually drop that directly into the billing software, so that it'll automate. You can maybe give a few more details about how that's going to work.
I'm also very pleased to say that the billing software will probably be implemented a month ahead of schedule. So right now, Munibilling, who's the new billing software system, is working with Zenner on the integration of the two systems. So I'm hoping that that will be done by the end of this week, and that perhaps we can run our first billing cycle on the September readings.
And then once all these are in, the system is up and running, I'll be working with, who was our group out of Pennsylvania?
LB Water.
LB Water, to see if we can add a pressure transmitter to the water tower. Right now, it's a mechanical adjustment. It's always a pain and it needs servicing, and someone has to go in the tank and all of this. But if we can monitor the pressure at the bottom of the tank through one of the pipelines, and then hopefully that signal can integrate to the mesh network. So we'll pick that up, and we'll see how we can integrate that. So we'll have a good view of what's going on with the water system. So I'm pretty thrilled about that. The other thing that we did over the week was we did a deep cleaning on the lift station at the inn. That's one that we've struggled with, with grease, carryover and things. So we've now deep cleaned it. We actually sent somebody inside to pressure wash and vacuum everything out. So now we have a baseline to go from so that we can monitor and see, you know, if we're getting a grease buildup again, now we can go back and research where it is. We've also added a lid, a new lid that allows very easy access, because ESS is part of their weekly inspections. In town, we'll be doing a visual inspection on the lift station, just so we can see, are we having problems with grease? I'm also going to ask, based on speaking with William at the inn, I'm going to ask Cody as to whether or not we can have ESS simply lift the lid on the grease trap, just to take a look and see if the level is there. It has a schedule in which it's being pumped out, but we just want to kind of monitor that and see if it's getting kind of high. Maybe we need to do that so we don't have a carryout. And we've talked about maybe at some point that grease trap gets a thorough cleaning, and Atrium would actually send somebody inside to verify the piping, anything else, so that we know that that grease trap is working properly. So this way, again, all the systems are doing what they're supposed to be doing. So we're hoping to do that. I'm going to add one other item. In a previous meeting, we talked about the possibility of an EV charging station, public charging station. I've reached out to four of the major networks. Only one of them actually returned my email. It's a company called ChargePoint. And so I'm just starting to find out how their system works, would they be interested in a charging station, possibility of putting that at the post office? So I'd have to work with Tim to get his approval and all that. But being that there's a transformer right there on the ground, it could make for a very easy installation.
That's great.
Then that puts us into another map of EG EV charging network in the country. So hopefully by the next meeting, I'll have more details of what it entails, what responsibilities there are, if there's any financial responsibilities, all of that thing, and I'll bring that to council.
Thank you. That sounds wonderful. Anything that you want to add?
Only two brief things, which is the wonderful part about the new system is when we'll be able to monitor the system and then so we'll prevent some losses over leaks, because we'll detect them early, be able to stop them. And, you know, I'm always minding pennies, $3,600 in savings from a meter reader.
So that's always a good thing. Thank you. Thank you both very much for all your work on these things. And Barbara, thank you for everything that you're doing with this. Barbara, be prepared, there's probably going to be a lot of people getting their September bills who are going to be very confused, and so just brace yourself.
Be on vacation.
And Joe's fine with it, because he'll just man the phone.
We'll just fall forward the line directly to his cell.
That's right. Planning Commission. Ms. Anstey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We didn't meet in June, but we are meeting, as the zoning administrator just said, on Friday, this Friday, at 3:00 PM, to go through a number of applications, either concerned with zoning or concerned with special use permits. You had charged us to look at an ordinance on swimming pools and on solar. Planning Commission has essentially finished that work. I think it's now going to the town attorney for some wording issues, and then it will be coming to you.
Thank you very much for all your work on that. I know you all did a lot of research and investigation, so thank you to all of you for doing that. Seeing that, is there anyone on the Architectural Review Board? I hadn't seen anybody from the Architectural Review Board here today, so assuming there is no one from the Architectural Review Board, we'll go on to old business?
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I'm wondering if we could ask the Planning Commission and the ARB to provide us with a brief report?
Written.
Yeah, written report, much like the zoning administrator's done. Doesn't have to be the full minutes, but just sort of a summary that we can then have to look at.
Okay, I'm very happy to do that. The zoning administrator is effectively reporting. He has a section on planning permission either in ARB, so I'm not sure what more we could bring to that.
I think just the minutes would be fine.
Well, the problem with the minutes is that they don't come until...
That's right.
Unless you, we just get a draft of the minutes or something.
Yeah, yeah. Just fine to use your report. I think that should suffice. Yeah.
Yeah. That's all I'm suggesting.
One paragraph.
All right. Going on to old business, we have had a request for applications for the council seat that is vacated by Mary Ann Kuhn, who resigned sadly for us on June 30. And we have one applicant, as I understand.
Correct.
That applicant is, I forget his real first name?
Oh.
Oh, John?
John Beard, known as Drew Beard by everyone.
Right.
Has submitted an application. Drew is currently, is he the secretary on the Planning Commission?
I believe he's in the council.
Okay, so he'll continue to, he'll serve as a liaison?
Right.
Great.
And he's also the town representative to businesses of Rappahannock.
Oh, good. Okay, which is appropriate.
Mm-hmm.
Great. So having no other nominations that came in by the deadline, which was when? July 6th. Can we have a motion to appoint Drew Beard to the town council?
I'm very happy to move to appoint Drew Beard to finish the term of Mary Ann Kuhn. He has big shoes to fill, but goes without saying.
Absolutely.
And I'm happy to second.
Great. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
That was a dramatic pause.
That was.
Drew Beard, we are glad to have you with us. We appreciate that. The next part in line with that is going to new business. We would like to have a small honoring of Ms. Kuhn for all that she has done for the town of Washington, and I'm turning it over to Patrick, who has worked with her longer than anybody else here on the town council.
Thank you. Mayor Catlin has given me the privilege, as the council's most senior member, to extend our appreciation to Vice Mayor Mary Ann Kuhn for her 17 years of service to the town of Washington. Mary Ann is not departing. She's just moving a tiny bit too far beyond the town's boundaries for us to facilitate a boundary line adjustment in order to keep her on the council. If we could, we probably would, but I can only imagine the controversy. In a previous life, Mary Ann enjoyed an exciting career as a journalist for the Washington Star and the Washington Post. She then went on to become a CBS News producer. In 1994, she purchased a historic home in Little Washington, and in 1995, transformed it into the Middleton Inn. Middleton received four diamonds from the American Automobile Association in 2011. Mary Ann's commitment to community service is unparalleled. She served on the Planning Commission, then as Secretary of the Town Council, and finally as our Vice Mayor, winning the most number of votes in the past election. I think it was 48, if I recall. As a resident of the town, Mary Ann became the editor of the Rappahannock News and Vice President of the Rappahannock Historical Society. To say that she has her finger on the pulse of this town would be an understatement. If you ever want to know the latest scoop on what's going around in Little Washington, Mary Ann will have the answer. She's also familiar with many of the colorful characters who were part of the town's earlier history. But throughout the many controversies and sometimes divisiveness, Mary Ann has always managed to maintain a balanced diplomatic perspective and keep her sense of humor intact. All of us will miss her but are confident that five minutes away, she won't become a stranger. So on behalf of the council and the citizens of Washington, Virginia, we'd like to present you with a little token of our appreciation, so you won't forget where you grew up.
Photo op.
Photo op, always.
Mr. Mayor, may I say a few words?
Yes, please.
First of all, thank you all. I'm deeply, deeply honored and grateful to have had the opportunity to serve with each of you, and also with past administrations and mayors, one of whom is sitting right here, and for the opportunity to play a role in this town, this beautiful historic town, and preserve its heritage and our way of life. Thank you.
I had mentioned to Patrick earlier that one of the benefits we have with Mary Ann Kuhn is that she always made sure that we washed our language. So we're grateful to her for that. The next item on our agenda is to have an extension of the sewer to the Washington, Virginia, I'm sorry, Washington Volunteer Fire and Rescue. We have informally thought about this, and it has been coming up as a sidebar in some discussions with Rush River and other that the local fire department has had a need to have wastewater extended to it. And so that is something that we wanted to discuss tonight as a council. Let me turn it over to Mr. Whitehead, get his comments, and then I would appreciate any comments from other members of the town council.
No, I just think this is something we've been talking about since we all, really since I joined the council nearly four years ago, is this idea of extending the water and sewer district or opening the ordinance so that we could extend it for our emergency responders. And I think it's an important thing for us to do for our community, you know, extend that same courtesy to the courthouse complex. And I can't imagine how we've gone so long without finding a way to do it for our first responders. Certainly, the development at Rush River has enabled us to look toward extending the water and sewer system until it's just right down across the road. I think in a lot of ways, we've been waiting for the fire department to come to us first, but it just seems like this the time for us to go ahead and do this as a commitment to our community and our first responders.
I agree. Any other comments?
Yeah, I agree 100%. As a matter of fact, you and I were talking with the chief a year or two ago, and there's been a lot of conversation, and I think now it's time. And I'd be very comfortable with something like directing our town attorney to get with the bondholder, with the sewer bondholder, to ensure in writing that they are fine with us extending it to emergency services. And then following that, then we can work on the rest of the legal part.
Okay. Any other comments?
They are currently served by a well?
Yes.
And a drain field?
No, I think they have town water.
They're on town water, yeah.
So all we're really talking about is extending the sewer. And I understand that they're having some difficulties with their septic system as of this time.
Right.
So it may be a propitious time to look at this. I would like to follow up on Ms. Swift's proposal that we prepare the legal documents necessary in case the Washington Volunteer Fire and Rescue wishes to apply for an extension of sewer by providing the legal exemption to the town sewer restrictions, to anything that we need to do to extend the sewer district. In other words, Mr. Krim, we'd like you to work your legal magic on this document.
Yes, sir. Happy to do that.
And then what we'll do is we'll have it ready, and then we will wait. If the Washington Volunteer Fire and Rescue wishes to apply, we will have the legal obstacles taken care of. And at that point, then we can just deal with the physical obstacles of how they will get it across the street and so on and so forth. Okay. So I think if, at this point, unless there is any objection, I think I am just, as the mayor, tasking the town attorney to go ahead at Ms. Swift's suggestion that we have the town attorney work on the process to get through these legal obstacles.
I think we probably have to have a motion directing, a motion, Martin?
Fine, sure.
All right, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I make a motion that we direct our town attorney, Mr. Krim, to contact the sewer bondholder for their permission in writing to take the system outside of the town limits because of the emergency services.
And prepare the legal documents.
And prepare the legal documents.
All right.
I would just amend that to say, prepare the appropriate legal or appropriate language that would be needed to be modified in the ordinance, in the water and sewer ordinance to make this effectual, so we can act on it as soon as we're ready.
Okay. Ms. Batson, do you have enough of that to work with?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion?
Will this have any bearing on the negotiations with the county for another boundary line adjustment?
In my own personal view, I have sought very much to try to have a collegial relationship with the county, and I don't see a need for negotiations. This is a need of the community. And so it's important that we, as a community, do this, rather than worry about it as part of the BLA.
Well, I think you want to add that we started discussion of this long before Rush River was even conceived. So this has been on the table. We just simply haven't acted on it because the Washington Fire Department hasn't come forward that they are making whatever changes to their facilities or their system has completely failed and needed our assistance. I should note that when we look at the current sewer system, it actually ends on Warren Avenue up near where the transformer is for the post office, because we have to connect the post office in. So it doesn't actually extend down the street. But with the Rush River development, we will be bringing it down, so it makes it more convenient to make that tie-in. But this is something that, again, totally predated anything on boundary adjustments, on Rush River, on any of that. And I think that should be important to note. This is an action that we're taking outside of any of those discussions and developments.
Knowing that their system is starting to fail, we need to put some urgency on it.
Yes.
All right. So Washington Volunteer Fire and Rescue, we have heard of your possible need, and we are willing to assist you if we may. So we have a motion, we have a second. Those an approval, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are approved. Thank you. Ms. Swift?
Thank you.
Public hearing regarding the zoning.
Public hearing regarding zoning fees. Before I open it up to public comment, I would like to just make note that the zoning ordinances, we had asked Mr. Guyerson to not only look at them and look at surrounding communities to see where we're at, but also put them in some semblance of logic, which I'm very pleased to say that I think it's great to have it laid out like this. From a financial standpoint, the fiscal year prior, prior FY 2021, our income versus expense was negative almost $17,000. This past fiscal year, the income and expense were almost $27,000 in the red. So I think it's very timely that we look at these and thank you in this. So I will now open the public hearing for comment.
If you are going to speak about the zoning fees, please go to the microphone, state your name, and whether you're a resident of the town. your name and whether you're a resident of the town or not.
Here.
Awaist, we want to have anybody, no.
Hello?
You can also twist the thing.
I'm too tall.
Yes.
I think it's picking you up.
You're on the vertical.
It's picking you up.
I didn't see the Elvis movie yet. I'm not touching it. I think I'll knock it over. All right, thank you for allowing me my perspective on the fees. My name is Robert Fass. I'm the general manager of the Inn at Little Washington, if one knows that right. I thought that I would just share a couple, I'll try to be as brief as I can, my thoughts and maybe state some of the facts and reminders that you all know, but kind of my perspective on the fees and why now we're doing it. I may have a different opinion, as Gail, to the losses on that line item. So as a general manager, I'm responsible for all of the operation from top to bottom, including financial responsibility. So it's my job to make sure that the inn runs financially properly. So the growth we've experienced has been a tremendous win-win for the town as well as the inn and the people in the local community. The development we'll talk about in just a second. So running a business, I want to talk about that quickly, especially in this day and age. Everyone's watching the news, what you read in the paper about the labor shortage and retention of staff and the wages increasing, not keeping up with inflation is a real thing. People quit constantly, so running that's tough. The investment we're making on benefits and staff morale and training is probably the most it's ever been in history. Plus, the goods keeps increasing tremendously. We're at a position where we are very careful raising our prices. It's a touchy thing to raise our prices. We're absorbing a lot of that cost. As you know, Patrick continues to pour money back into the inn for developing and keeping going. It's hard to run any business, let alone this business. We spend millions of dollars a year to keep it going and keep it moving and keep it ascending. So I just bring that point up to let you know, you know, observing this fee increase is another additional expenses by the thousands of dollars. We have some few projects going on right now. We're nearing the $7,800 mark of fees, and we haven't put a nail in a piece of siding yet and excavated or anything. So it's costly. I mean, it's a cost of doing business. So it's a concern of mine going forward, and I just, I was, I wrote down some figures here just to let you know, and I know we keep talking about this, and it rears its head all the time. But since 2015 until now, the town coffers from the inn has received $429,000 more dollars from our business girls. So it's a win-win. So the negative line item on, it just begs the question of what do you get for that? So can it be zoning fees? I don't know. Can it be if you're developing revenue generating rooms that will sustain income for the town for years to come? Maybe the fees are waived or reduced. I mean, there should be some consideration for what this one entity does for this town. We'd calculated every single room additional we'll put on is $9,000 additional to the town coffers. But we pay fees and fees and fees and fees and fees where I think it should be viewed as a partnership from the town. There's no skin in the game. So in the grand scheme of things, are these fees astronomical where we're going to pay double, maybe in some cases? And you look at different jurisdictions and municipalities, and they don't match up to what we do. There's only one entity really driving the revenue here, unlike the other municipalities. And in a town with a population less than 100 people, I mean, Steve's fee schedule is very organized and thorough, but for, and I think you could sit on somebody's porch and come up with what to do in this town. It's very, it seems to be too burdensome. It's punitive to businesses. The comprehensive plan says to grow the businesses, and it makes you wonder why someone would want to come in here and go through all of that stuff in this little town. So it's just my perspective. I think we should view it as a partnership to develop this town. We're going to go forward with it. So, you know, obviously, I'm opposed to the increases of the fees and the different structure because of running this business. It's just, I just, as you know, I'm very protective of Patrick and the inn, so when I get $429,000 more dollars since 2015 and then charge, 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 water bill, fee bill, so it just, I just become reluctant. So that's my, thank you for the time. I don't mean to be sounding negative, but I never stand up to the microphone. I want you to know that. So I'm very protective of the inn. It's my job, I'm financially responsible for it, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thanks, Bob. Any other comments? No, I will close the public hearing on, oh, sure, Caroline.
On this nice piece of paper that you kindly prepared, it's very difficult for those of us not, sort of, who don't know the secret language of zoning fees, to know what they're being increased from.
That is the big question because it's comparing apples and oranges. It's not taking the fees and increasing them, it's totally rearranging and redoing them, so.
Okay, but are we not able to say what percent increase that's going to be for, you know, had Bob Fass, he said he's already spent $7,800, what will that be under this new regime? I'm just trying to get a sense of how much they're going up by.
It's an interesting question. I think as far as I can understand it, that a lot of the, that you can't really compare the $7,800 because those are for actions that have already occurred, and they may not have an additional set of actions. So it's hard to look at that $7,800 figure and figure out what the increase is there. But it is fair to say that we should have a sense of what the percentage increase is.
Trouble is, we don't have, we don't have all those itemized things in the prior schedule. There are some of them there, but not all of them. And I think what Steve has done, and I applaud him because, I mean, it's quite a task, you know, it's not an arbitrary thing. He's done the work, he's reviewed other jurisdictions, and it's helping us to be more organized and more professional as a town. Because a lot of things, if you go back in time when we had John McCarthy here, you could wander down to John's office and ask him a question, and he'd look at you, and he'd look at the sky, and you go, yeah, yeah, okay, fine, and it'd be this, and you just got sort of a verbal. And then we had John Bennett, a little more formal, but along those same lines. Now we have a proper zoning administrator who's coming in and organizing this. And so, you know, I've looked at him, and I agree, I mean, I've looked through him, and I've tried to figure, you know, what was in, what did we have in the past, what do we have now? And like Gail said, it's apples and oranges. It's not a direct comparison, but.
I just want to, I don't want to get hung up on that I'm disputing the percentage of increases by any means. So there's that piece of it, too. What my main point is the burden of, you know, there's the residential fees and then non-residential fees, which are double, more than double in some cases. It's punitive to businesses. It's restrictive and burdensome to grow and do something. It's kind of a pain, really. So I commend Steve's work. I think it's very thorough. What he's done to the town so far by making systems and meeting with us, he's tightening up the processes and making it much easier. I enjoy it quite a bit. I'm a very system and logic person. But don't get hung up that I'm disputing a percentage of increase of the price. I think it's, for a town of less than 100 people, I don't think it needs to be this complicated. Here's the Rappahannock County zoning fee. Look at this. That's what they have. Very simple. I don't know if it's right or not, but, I mean, it's easier for me to read this. So I'm just saying, maybe simplicity and giving a nod towards businesses who are trying to do revenue generating situations for the benefit of the town rather than being restrictive about it. That's all.
I might just note that now that you've held that up, Bob, we don't know that the zoning administrator may be taking a look at what Steve's done with the county, and you may see that whole, that whole thing change and roll over to something more.
Obviously, the public hearing is still open. Next.
Refresh my memory, didn't we just vote on fees not that long ago when John Bennett was sitting here?
Yes, they were raised already once.
Wouldn't that, how long ago was that?
And they, but they were raised in the form and everything that they were prior, so that many, many of the different zoning things were all lumped together in one fee description. So what Steve did, the reason it's so long, is that he's broken out so that it's much easier for somebody coming in to say, okay, these are the fees.
It just seems like we just did it, quote unquote, yesterday.
Right. By our standards, it was yesterday.
Exactly.
Any more public comments?
Yes.
Just two or three points regarding the fees, and, you know, I appreciate all the praise about getting it organized. Love that. So, but I did look at other jurisdictions. I did look at the county's fees. I looked at the town of the Plains, really easy, so. And Gordonsville and Middleburg, just to get a flavor of what's going on in the region. The other thing is, I did look at the idea of raising them just by percentage across the board, which would have made for a much lighter advertisement. But that didn't make sense. One thing that I need to point out that's important in looking at the fees is submitting the application, pretty much the easy part. The inn or Rush River or anybody else prepares a plan and drops it off with a complete application fee, and then we all forget about it and hope it all goes through the system very smoothly. But the next part of that, which is, I think evidently, look at the post office as a project, so much goes on afterward that takes endless amount of time and coordination. And the idea of extending matrix that I've given you, the spreadsheet that I've, try to pick up some of the cost as the project matures, we've got to do a lot of work internally to care of it happen. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Steve. All right, now I'll close the public hearing, and I'm going to now turn it over to Joe because he and I have been doing some brainstorming and have some ideas.
So I spent some time with Gail before we came in this evening and just said, you know, one of my, having some time over the weekend to sit and think about this and a number of other things that are on the agenda, it's always bad when we have a rainy day, I've got plenty of time to sit around and think, is my concern, when I went back through the list, I agree with the, like, trying to do the crosswalk over the weekend was not much fun, but was that we, the conversation in town frequently devolves to a conversation about one business. We have three other operating inns in the town and a couple of Airbnbs. I said in the paper last week, you know, our business is tourism, and we want to encourage those to keep operating, and those commercial entities are the ones who tend to bear the burden of having complicated applications to our various ordinances. So I think it's incumbent on us to continue to encourage business in the town that thriving along with residences and et cetera, which we're hopefully going to see with Rush River. And to that end, I don't think, you know, I understand, our impulse here was a way to try to capture expenses to the town, you know, it was somewhat, in a way, more simple when John was in the seat because we just had a meter running, right? Like, you paid a little fee at the beginning, and then we were going to, you know, have an hourly fee that the attorney was, because it was all one spot. So I think what I would propose is that we amend this, that we not charge a non-residential applicant any more than double the fee that we're charging a residential applicant, which seems considerably more business friendly, I would argue, across the board, and that after approximately eight hours of work, and this is going to force Steve to think a little bit more like a lawyer on a project, that we consider some metering so that we would pass, because what we're trying to do here is recoup a direct cost, right? So we just pass on, cut out the middleman in a way. We reduce the initial application fee or smooth it out a little bit, and then set a standard where if it takes Steve longer than eight hours to deal with your particular application because it is extraordinarily complicated, then we simply meter it at that point. We pass on the direct cost to the town, to the applicant, to have Steve work in excess of that initial eight hours on the application.
Yeah, I ask, why not equality for all? Why should businesses be discriminated against?
That's a fair question. I was just trying to think of some way. But that's, that's.
When businesses are providing the majority of the funds to run the town, it's a little like us charging our best customer more. And that's not going to go over too well. It should be the reverse. So as the only member of council attempting to run a business within the town, I sympathize with how difficult it must be for you to put yourselves in the shoes of someone who is attempting to run a business. It's a lot harder here than closer into Washington DC, to any suburban Northern Virginia location. This is more costly, and it is more becoming more overly complicated. I think at every meeting, we should start by reminding ourselves how many human beings we are representing. How many people live in this town? 100. Where does the money come from? We all know. And it cannot be compared to all the other little towns around here and say, oh, it's just like the Plains. It isn't. This is an anomaly. It's not happening anywhere else in the state of Virginia, that one entity is driving all the business, providing all the money, and this group is spending it. So the trajectory that you're on is simply going right up with the more you have, the more you're going to spend, the more consultants we will be hiring, the more officers we will be paying. It wasn't that long ago when the town attorney was volunteer, when Mary Ann was the secretary, and we didn't attempt to play big government. We were a sweet little town where everyone knew each other, and we got on with business. You went to John McCarthy, you knew he was an honest and fair person, and you had a discussion, and life moved on. Now, you might as well put your head in a vise if you're trying to run a business here. You go to this person, then you go to that person, then you fill this out, then you have to go to the county, then you do this. We have one person just organizing these permits. Every contractor we've worked with in the last six months has come to us and say, is there something in the water here? We say, maybe so. But we've never dealt with anything so overly unnecessarily complicated in our lives and the inconsistencies. So we do laud that we're trying to get it down on paper and organize ourselves, but it's a simple, simple, simple situation. We're trying to pay for another consultant and administrative individual out of money we can squeeze out of the businesses, primarily one business. So that's the fact.
I would just stipulate to one thing, and I keep an eye on this very closely, and Barbara knows I ask her about it all the time, but our combined two consultants in that term cost us less at the moment than our single county attorney did before. Now, I'm not saying that that's a good thing or a bad thing, I'm just saying, in general, we're not, you know me, the last person's going to allow us to spend another dollar or that sort of thing, but, and I would just point out, I don't have a problem with your argument. with your argument, I tend to agree with it, I'm much more laissez faire than a lot of folks. But I think what they tried to do is ape what was in the original ordinance, which did include a difference in fees for minor and major projects, which was never explained in detail what major or minor meant, and we, I think all knew exactly, you know, knew how that would play out fee-wise as an assessment. So I think it's fair to say that Steve and Barbara, in good faith, followed that same rubric in trying to construct something for us to consider tonight. I think it is, I personally think that it's, that these are a little out of sync with they should be.
Thank you.
Something closer to what was in the original.
The first threshold we crossed was when Frank Reynolds was our volunteer attorney, and everyone else was volunteer. Then we hired a town attorney, we had reason to, we had some suits, we needed a little more protection, we felt. But we only invited the town attorney to join the meetings when we had something of a legal nature that we needed his advice on. And then it segued, because there was more money in the budget, let's just have the town attorney join us at all meetings, and the Christmas party, and whatever picnic. So those meters are running now, and we need to remind ourselves that if we stay on this path, we're going to have three or four more people coming in here, because we have the money going up, and we think we can, the more money you have, the more money you spend. I can attest to that.
Okay, I have, I.
Not on my watch.
I have a recommendation. My recommendation is that Joe and I and Steve and Barbara get together, we take all of the comments, we tweak everything, we've come up with some ideas, and we'll see you in August.
That sounds like a good proposal.
I also, I commend you for your reasonableness, but I have a sense that the 100 people who live here, at least 68 of them not being present tonight, may have feelings about increased fees in general. And it would be very interesting to have a way to poll them.
Oh, we had invited everybody to come tonight.
Well, I do think that we have to remind ourselves that we're representing all of them, and when they have $675,000 coming in annually from one entity, it's normal for someone to say, how much more do you need to run a town of 100 people?
There are, while certainly not nearly as successful as your business, as a businessman, I have seen my expenses from having to deal with government go up four or fivefold in the last 10 to 15 years. Unfortunately, we live in a society where 20 years ago, you could have volunteer attorneys, and you could have volunteer people doing a lot of the work, but we have gotten to a point, both with the strictures of the Commonwealth's government and national government and all sorts of other requirements, that'll require us to be sure that we are dotting our i's and crossing our t's more effectively. So I agree that we are a 100-person town, and I have no umbrage with a proposal that's come forth, but I do want to make it clear that even if we are a small town, there are certain minimum requirements that we need to do in order to be an effective government. And there are requirements on us by the state government, by the federal government, and just for our own legal and infrastructure well-being. So, Patrick, I deeply appreciate your points, and I just wanted to provide that small asterisk.
I agree wholeheartedly, and we are unique also in that most towns in the state of Virginia are growing. Our population has diminished.
As has the entire county.
Yes, yes, yes.
And yet we have those expenses.
Right.
All right, so there is a suggestion out there, I don't think we need to make a motion to table, we just table it?
Yeah, we're just going to table it, and the four of us will get together.
Do some more evaluation?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Discussion of tab fees.
We can table that till next month as well.
Yeah, let's just move that to next month.
All right.
Get off fees, right.
All right. The next item of business that we have is application for a boundary line adjustment. I'd like to go ahead and give everyone a sense of what the protocol is as we move forward through this part of the meeting. We're going to start with a public forum, we're going to seek comments specifically on the topic of this boundary line adjustment application for the area that we're going to call Rush River Commons 2. I also want to remind you that there will be a public forum on all other general issues that will occur at the end of this meeting. So the public forum that I am about to open up will be just for things that pertain to this application for boundary line adjustment. As before, I ask each speaker to please identify themselves by name and residence, and please, you were pretty good, but let's see if we can get closer to 100% to be sure that we use the microphone, and then please be as succinct as possible when you speak. So I'll open up for a public forum at this point to talk about the boundary line adjustment, and Judy DeSono.
Brad, I just might want to note for folks, I know everybody has noticed this, but we received a communication back from the county on Friday, July, just for the record, Friday, July 8th, with a letter with a question, and then a company-marked-up version of the boundary line adjustment, which is in the packets. We received that last Friday, after the county's action last week.
I was proud to be the only person who attended the Board of Supervisors meeting and commented, in fact, on anything, but I was surprised that, given the signs around that there were not going to be more people speaking in opposition. I'm obviously for the boundary line adjustment, and what I said in my remarks is I was perplexed by the conditions which had nothing to do with the boundary line adjustment that were placed on the document. And I've spoken also to the representative of Hampton, and, oh, by the way, I am a resident of the town on Harris Hollow Road, so I think we have our work cut out for us, but let me say that I want this to happen. And I said in my testimony that some of their conditions were things that we might be happy to do but had no reason to be in this document, and looked like, you give us this, and then maybe we'll, but anyway, there may be some things we have to fight hard and accept. I hope not, I hope this happens, and I hope it happens in a timely way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to? Yes.
So I'm going to second what Judy said. There's a lot in here that is in no way linked to a boundary adjustment, and some of it might be good, I mean, the fire and extending the sewer to the fire, we've already talked about that. But I think this is going to come down to, you know, how much do we want this, and what is the price we're willing to pay? And this is far too high a price, in my mind. I mean, no ARB jurisdiction over what might happen with county buildings frightens me. 10 years moratorium on other boundary adjustments, I'm not even sure if you can tie the hands, legally tie the hands of future administrations. Meals and lodging tax, thin end of the wedge, you know, once you get into that, who knows where you're going to end up. So, and there are other things in here, but I think at the end of the day, the question is, do we think that any conditions, where did this issue of conditions come from? Because we know it's in the, it would be to the benefit of the county as well, and we've allowed ourselves to get into this debate where it looks as if we're the supplicant asking for something that's only of benefit to the town, but it isn't, we know that. So the narrative has got distorted, but, and then the question is, are there other means of getting Rush River 2 without doing it in this way?
Thank you. Mary Ann?
I agree with the two previous speakers, and I also ask myself, and hope each of you ask yourselves, that before you sat there, other people sat there to preserve our town and the way it is. And what I think is that we would be giving up so much and getting so little, why would we even want to continue with Rush River 2? Because we, there are so many things in here, like Caroline and Judy said, that have nothing to do with boundary line, but it does have a lot to do with who we are and what generations before us have done to preserve it, and we don't want to give that up.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
John Sullivan, town resident. May I ask a question of Mr. Crim and/or you, the mayor, before I say what I think? The county several times has represented the process of this discussion, has been one in which county attorney, Mr. Goff, Mr. Ockery's attorney, Mr. Foot, and the town's attorney, Mr. Crim, have conversed and chatted and whatever about this, and now we have a document. And the impression that I picked up in the paper has conveyed, only because I've seen what the county has said, one might have the impression, might, this is a document that the town really participated in the drafting of it, which is to say that Mr. Crim might not be accusatory, might have been in meetings with these other lawyers, and they talked about, well, we could give this, we do that, here's this, we do that. And I kind of wonder, this is a matter of fact, is this a document which the town, through its lawyer, has really been part of a try, or is this something that Mr. Crim talked to a couple of people on the phone one day, and that's the form of the conversation?
Mr. Crim, do you feel comfortable responding to this?
Certainly. Yeah, I had some preliminary conversations with Mr. Foote and Mr. Goff, indicating that I'd had no authority from the town council to agree to anything, but providing some comments on what the proposal had been from the county. This is an attempt to get the document hammered into some sort of reasonable shape so that it's, we can have something to consider, but it's always been conditioned on coming to council for approval.
So to kind of cut through that, you have not been an active participant in putting together this document.
Well, I haven't had any direction from the council as to what you wanted to see in it, but when I saw a draft, I could comment on and say things like, well, that's never going to fly, or, you know, this doesn't, this seems to be lacking in some respect, and trying to make it a better document so that you have something before you that doesn't have so many flaws.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, does that answer your question?
I know what I heard, and I think it did, I wonder if other people did as well. I mean, I just don't think this is a document that reflects a lot of input from the town of Washington.
That's right.
Yep. And I think some people might have a different impression. As to the merits of it, one, I'm for the boundary, thank God I follow these great people, for the boundary line adjustment. I do not like from day one the county's approach to this whole thing, what's in it for us, what do we get? I think it's been confrontational. It's trying to extract stuff from us. They want, quote, concessions, concessions. Mr. Ockery's proposal, if I recall correctly, would provide community center, place that would be inexpensive for the library to move, $20,000, $25,000 worth in real estate taxes, an amphitheater. They wanted to do housing, people didn't like the housing, okay, so housing's off the table. But all this other stuff strikes me as kind of good for the community. I don't know what the argument. Second, I would strongly urge you, as my friends suggested, but we're not as harsh on, that I think the ARB, giving them the right to not be covered by ARB is just not, should not be on the table. And they're very clever, and they're very smart, they noticed that the town itself is not subject to the ARB regulation, which is true. But I would make two points. One, a town has always gone through the ARB whenever it was necessary, because we thought that's what was appropriate. Everybody else did it, so should. Secondly, the town in terms of buildings is like this building and a building down the wastewater plant, and some slimes. County has at least 10 buildings, all of which are in need of help, and they want to put up a courthouse for some number, you know, five, six million, you know, whatever, may be needed, right in the center of town. That's gigantic, that is not the same as towns. And at the end of the day, let's just go a step further, if you'll allow me, just take another couple of minutes, I don't come here often. At the end of the day, the counties understandably will want to have a functional building at a low cost, or an appropriate cost. And that may not be the guidelines that we would find preferable in terms of how that building fits into this town. And that will become an issue. I can already hear they want to pay more money, this precious little town to have a pretty little building. With regard to food and lodging, we all know what that is. That is just an effort to hope they can get access in some way to the basic meals and lodging taxes in the town, for obvious reasons, where there's, as has been pointed out tonight, where there's a lot of money. And I just wouldn't even go there. And so at some point, you all, and slash the town, might be forced to decide, is it worth certain concessions, and there's some other things, or the Ockery plan, which might be the greater good of the county? But one might say, not, you know, I don't need to go there. And then, and there may be other ways that are maybe harsher and more dramatic to accomplish the same task of bringing it, but I wouldn't. I sense there's a lot of backbone in this room, and I think that's really good.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Are there any other publics from the comment? Yes, Ms. Bunton?
I agree with what's been said. This is just full of animosity, the typical, traditional animosity between the county, or that the county has had for the town. And it's designed to prevent you from agreeing, you know, it's like everything they could think of to add in to keep you from agreeing to it. It's just bitter, very bitter.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other public comments? I only say that because town council members are happy after the public forum ends to be able to share our thoughts as well. So I will close the public forum on this issue. I'd like to begin, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to start with kind of an overview of how we got here to answer some of the questions that Mr. Sullivan and some of the other people have said or asked. Then what I'd like to do is, I'd like to have a protocol where we start with, from Mr. Crim, and go on over, and just follow with Mr. Whitehead and then Ms. Swift, and then I'll have some personal comments, and then Patrick and Brad. And then we'll be able to determine what we want to do after that. But before that, we get to that point, I want to go ahead and start with an overview. But before that, we get to that point, I want to go ahead and start with an overview. For those who don't know, there is set out by the Commonwealth of Virginia a process for a boundary line adjustment. The application is made by the property owner. There is a deliberation by both affected localities. They receive public input throughout that process. And then if there is an agreement, both governments independently petition the district court to rule favorably on the boundary line adjustment. It's a very simple process. This particular boundary line adjustment process began with an application eleven months ago. From the beginning, the town has expressed its support of the boundary line adjustment mechanism. While we have not met in public session on this specific BLA application until tonight, the town council has repeatedly said that it supports BLAs if they benefit the community in which the county and the town both live. To wit, an amendment to the 2006 Comprehensive Plan talked about the importance of boundary line adjustments. A resolution in support of boundary line adjustments occurred in the summer of 2019 by this town council. And then public comments in various news outlets by the mayor expressing support of this particular BLA because of its benefit to the entire Rappahanna community. So this is the first time that we have had a chance to talk about it officially. During the past nine months, the town has demonstrated their support of a simple BLA agreement. In that same period, the County Board of Supervisors has discussed and decided to pursue a list of concessions from the town based on an unsolicited document from the property owner's attorney last summer. It was a draft BLA agreement, and it included proposed proffers, proffers that usually come from the property owner when undertaking a building project. That's a standard operating procedure for property owner to offer these proffers to the locality in which it's being built. This attorney did not seek approval from the town for the creation of this proposed draft BLA agreement before it was sent out, nor was the town aware of its contents. Moreover, the property owner's attorney does not, nor in recent memory, has not represented the town or its town council. However, I do not fault, I do not fault the attorney's attempt with this draft BLA agreement last summer. He sought to facilitate the process and keep it moving forward. While I applaud the attorney's initiative and his desire to expedite the process, I'm afraid that his efforts led others to manipulate his good motives to the detriment of this whole process. All I know is that a simple BLA process, done several times in the past between the town and the county, now became embroiled in a miasma of one upmanship towards the town. This boundary line adjustment is about doing what's best for the community. This is not about the town or the county. This is not, this is not the start of a slippery slope leading to a future Clevenger's Corner. There are controls already available to the public to prevent that. This is about looking at the future, and I don't mean the next few years, the next set of local re-elections, is about what services will be provided to our community in the future. We are a graying community, and we need more young members to stay in our community so that they can serve as teachers, emergency service workers, healthcare providers, and staff for our tourist and retail businesses. Right now, they can't afford to live in this community, even if they were born and raised here. They need affordable housing. We need affordable housing for our independent senior citizens to live within a close-knit community with walking trails and amenities near at hand. I know two of my neighbors who are in that situation right now. If the property owner succeeds in satisfying part of the demand for affordable housing and Rush River One, then he should be able, if that demand still exists, to continue to meet that need with a limited number of appropriate affordable housing units in this new area. This property in question is also about creating spaces that will serve and enhance our greater community, allow the means to gather as a community, and provide for nonprofit, social, and governmental service agencies to serve better our whole community. In other words, this is about community. A boundary line adjustment should be serving the whole community and not just one entity in it. All right. That is to give you an overview of this. And what, again, what I would like to do is, I'd start with the council members and let them have a chance to make their remarks. We're going to start from my, excuse me, from my right, with Mr. Krim.
Thank you. I'd just like to point out, I am not a council member.
Thank you.
So a few issues rise to the top when you're looking at this revised draft agreement that's dated July 6th. First of all, overall, this is, shall we say, a creative solution. Typically with a plain boundary line adjustment, it's just a boundary line adjustment with no frills. This has frills. And so normally when you have frills, you get the commission on local government involved. That's what their job is. It's a state agency that reviews inter-jurisdictional issues and provides input about whether it's good for both of the entities involved, as well as the community and the Commonwealth at large. That's not being proposed here. So that's, makes this a little bit unusual. As a couple of the members of the public have commented on the amendment to the ARB zoning ordinance to exempt county property is an issue that we need to pay attention to. You can't actually do that. You cannot enter into contract to change the zoning ordinance. That is, runs against the principle that you can't contract away the police power. And the police power is a technical term. It doesn't mean what police officers do. It means the right, the power and prerogative of the government to regulate for the benefit of public health, safety, and welfare. So that's what a zoning ordinance does. It regulates for the benefit of the public health, safety, and welfare. And you can't enter into a contract to say, regardless of what the public comment is at the public hearing, and regardless of what the planning commission recommends, we're going to pass this ordinance. No, that would be invalid on its face. So I was a bit shocked to see that, especially since my conversations with the county had indicated that they were moving away from that quest. Another point, in this agreement, it's a two-party agreement between the county and the town. It doesn't involve the developer, yet a lot of the terms affect the developer directly or require the developer to do certain things. And so how's that going to be enforced? The only enforcement mechanisms that's in the agreement right now is that the town will enforce its zoning ordinances, whatever those are, against the developer. And then there's a provision that says here that the county shall have a right, independent of the town, to enforce provisions of this paragraph two by an action in the circuit court. Well, what is, how's that going to work? They're not, you know, the developer's not a party to this. So how, there's no mechanism, there's no law that's cited as to how that would actually work. So that's a bit unusual. And then I also want to point out, there are a lot of other things that we could talk about. Chair Downey's letter dated July 8th asks about the bond documents precluding connections to parcels not in the town. What the, what the bond documents actually say is that the town can't construct, et cetera, any part of its system on lands other than those which it owns or can acquire title to or a perpetual easement of. So basically, they don't want you to expend capital on facilities that you don't control the land on. So you have to have it either in a street, or in property that is owned in fee simple by the town, or in a permanent sewer easement or a utility easement. That's all that means, and so that should not be confused. The issue with extending water and sewer outside the town limits is one of prudence and control. It's imprudent to extend it outside the town limits when you haven't completely serviced every part of the town yet. And it's, it's an issue of control where you run the risk of losing control of your utility system if you are extending it outside the town limits and somebody claims and files lawsuit saying that you have held yourself out as providing utility services in certain areas. And there is a circuit court case from Loudoun County which found that one of the towns there had held itself out and was required to serve somebody they said no to. And that's a real problem, particularly for a small system like yours, where you are very careful with every, every pipe that you have. So those are, those are the main issues as I see them here, and everything else, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about.
Thank you. Mr. Whitehead?
Well, I took notes on all the sections, but I don't know that we want to walk through all that, but I'm, I'm happy to at some point. But, you know, since this conversation began, I have, it has escaped me how we've gotten into this, you know, never before. And, you know, looking back through the minutes of all the boundary line adjustments we've done, has it ever become this quid pro quo insistence on our partners in the county? Reading over the, this document on Saturday, I was also perplexed by the way it is written as if it presumes that we can't have a conversation about anything in anything besides this document. I think we proved tonight that we can have a conversation about an interest area for the county and for the community by just having a conversation about it. If it came to dealing with the lifting of strictures on, on what to do with this building or what to do with the former Baptist church, I'm sure that we could likewise have that conversation, and we'd be happy to. The same with the moving of the memorial, if it comes to that. But I don't know why we would commit in a legal document to go before a judge to do all those things. It doesn't make any sense. Again, it presumes that we, as a small community, a very small community, as has been pointed out repeatedly tonight, can't have a conversation with ourselves about doing all these things that are in our interests going forward. I, you know, reliving my time as a staffer redlining this this weekend, but I, you know, I just, there's a number of, of issues that have already been raised tonight. You know, I think John pointed out rightly about ARB issues. It's been reiterated by our lawyer. To the point I'd like to make on that, is I thought it sort of funny when they held out that provision, which I actually had to look up in the zoning ordinance, I'll freely admit, that it said the town was exempt, because I'd just been before the ARB the previous month to represent the town on a ARB issue. And we do not apply that ordinance in practice, and we certainly would not extend it open handedly to another jurisdiction. You know, when it comes to this conversation about exclusions of future adjustments, these requests for judgments are made by landowners. How could we possibly tell a local landowner, you can't propose to bring your property into the town for water and services? We can't do that. There's no mechanism, I know that we could enforce it, for them to seek that. That's their choice. We know that there are lots in town that straddle the border already and that have issues, and that probably in the long term makes sense for them to come in. So why would we do that? Anyway, I think it's a deeply flawed document. I don't know that there is much for us to take action on it other than to say no. I will leave it there for now.
Thank you. Ms. Swift?
Thank you. You just saved me ten minutes. I'll make this very simple. The answer is no concessions. It's a property, I'm reiterating what everybody else said, a property owner came to the two entities requesting a boundary line adjustment. It's that simple. It's a basic system that should be done. This, I'm sorry, absolute no to everything. We've, well, we've pulled out the fire department because it was a separate item anyway, but no concessions. And yes, it's embarrassing.
My comments, I am opposed to all the conditions, but specifically to the ones that are not germane to the property, as I think Ms. Anstey mentioned that, or Ms. Disarno mentioned, that these are not even germane to the issue of the boundary line adjustment. As mayor, I am more than willing to meet and discuss in public with members of the Board of Supervisors regarding any concerns they might have on issues that they brought up in this document. Mr. White has already indicated this, and I know other members of the town council feel the exact same way. I have met with the county building committee and had offered to them the fact that the obelisk, not the memorial, but the obelisk that is on the Jet Street stub, that I would talk, be happy to talk to my town council members if they needed it moved, that they could go ahead and move it, and we could talk with the town council and see if the town council would approve it. I had helped map out a process. And then I find out in the next draft of the document that they not only demand that, but they want us to pay for the removal of it. Still, I am willing to reach out and work with them. I have stated before that the county stands to gain annually about fifteen to twenty thousand, by one estimate, in enhanced property tax revenue from this boundary line adjustment because the property, now dormant, would be used in a manner that benefited the community and raised its taxable land value, a value that likely is not going to be raised if they are not able to get sewer because of the nature of the land. Compared to that amount, any meals and lodging tax revenue would be small, almost to the point of being negligible. More importantly though, as it has already been stated, this time I know by Ms. Anstey, it would set a dangerous precedent on the issues of revenue sharing, and also something that has not been brought up, it would jeopardize the town's independence as a jurisdiction. Besides, it makes the Board of Supervisors look mercenary, and I don't think they are. The issue here is not about a small amount of meals and lodging tax, or even the county's enhanced property tax revenue. It is about the common good for the entire community from a community-based use of the land. Use of the property should conform to a town zone rather than take on a sixth zone that mirrors the county zone, especially since the uses in this proposal that they bring don't even reflect one of their zones. It's a, it's a modification of that zone that was done by members of the Board of Supervisors. Their demanded uses for the property do not correlate with the existing uses allowed by their zoning ordinance. There is a better time-tested solution that would allow the concerns of the community to be heard and incorporated into a final use of the property, rather than trying to start off with restrictions on the zoning in this document. It would seem prudent to require the property owner to undergo a PUD process, or a planned unit development process for this property, so that every citizen, be they in the town or the county, would have the right to provide input at public meetings on the property's use and limitations. This planned unit development instrument was successfully used by the town in the Rush River One approval process. It is an instrument the county does not currently have at its disposal. So there is a benefit for this property to be in the town and to be able for the people in our community to have more control over the process by having it in the town. Finally, as has been pointed out by my colleague, Mr. Whitehead, I am opposed to the limitation on future boundary line adjustments. While the town does not go out and seek boundary line adjustments, nor is it willing by any means to accept every submitted application, I feel it is appropriate not to constrain by this agreement a property owner who wishes to make application in the future. I'm not interested in prejudgment, which you would effectively do if you have a blanket ban on any future boundary line adjustment requests. It is an owner's right to be able to apply, and at that time, to make the application judged based solely on its own merit. And Virginia is a state where property owners, or property rights of the owner are sacrosanct. And it seems to me that if we were to ban any future applications, that we are taking away that sacrosanct right. So I am not in favor of any of the concessions. Mr. O'Connell?
I concur, and I wish we had unanimously come to this conclusion earlier. A great deal of valuable time and legal expenses have been spent on this attempt to be coerced by the county into providing concessions that are irrelevant. So can we just, as quickly as possible, tell them no concessions? Or do we have to put little signs in our yards, no concessions? I will provide them.
I'll pick mine up tomorrow.
That's all I have to say.
I think you hit on a point in the very beginning, and it's something that I've said to anyone who's discussed this with me. The matter of moving a boundary line is a simple process. It's between two government entities initiated by the request of a property owner. That's exactly what this is. The town didn't initiate it. The town isn't bringing the property in as an owner. They're not building on it as an owner or a developer. Town is simply saying, someone came to us, they asked to bring it into the town in order that they could get services that they need for their proposed and intended development. And that made logical sense to us. for their proposed and intended development, and that made logical sense to us." If I recall some of the meetings that I attended when I was part of Planning Council, Planning Commission, and some of the other meetings I had in training sessions on that, on zoning and such, I believe we even talked about the town boundaries growing to the geological, natural geological features. So, moving out towards Rush River, moving out in different directions, but not necessarily just, you know, grabbing for land, but that that would be something that would be beneficial to the town because it would bring land into the town boundaries so that it could be developed and housing or other uses. I don't know that that ever got into, into language into the, into our town's comprehensive plan, but I know it was a discussion. So, this sort of falls into that line, is that the boundary is moving out towards 211, and that's not a bad thing. I think the development is great. When they had the groundbreaking, our Hampton District Supervisor praised the development, praised the investment, you know, spoke, you know, glowing words about all of this. And then yet, when we look at this Phase Two, he wants to shut it all down. He wants to limit it. No housing, which is contrary to the county's comprehensive plan. So, you've signed onto a document that you support as a county supervisor, but then you say, "No, we're not going to follow it." So, it's sort of contradictory, and I'm, I'm a little disappointed in that action. But I think, you know, more importantly, when you start looking at, you know, our position on this and what they're asking for, you know, freedom from oversight by ARB. Okay, we're not Colonial Williamsburg. So, if you want to make repairs to county buildings, sure, the ARB is going to want to look at it. But they're not iron-fisted, chiseled-in-stone rules. We work together. They say, "We want to do this, well, we don't want to do that." We did that with the Rush River. It went through the ARB. We've had a, as I jokingly said to Patrick at the start of the meeting, I was impressed with the band of minions and their fast diligent work over just a matter of a few days to change the facade of the inn, and it's a lovely improvement. So, that went through the ARB, you know? And someone might say, "Well, I don't really like how that goes," but we work together. It's not steadfast that you can't do this and you can't do that. You have to have discussion. But what, what the county is coming forward with this is a set of conditions, and as someone pointed out, concessions. It's a bad word. They're extracting, they want to extract from the town these, these things, and I don't feel they're reasonable in any shape or form. So, my opinion is that we say no to all of this and send it back to the county and say, "We are a jurisdiction. We support the, the boundary line adjustment. You are a jurisdiction. Follow the guidelines and the rules of the state of Virginia and how that's all done."
Follow precedent.
Follow precedent, you know? And again, you know, 10-year moratorium on development, as I mentioned. There was discussion about, you know, moving the boundaries out to, you know...
It's actually in the 2019 BLA resolution.
Yeah.
That the town did.
Yeah. So, you know, there are things there, and I think people are just, you know, like say, it's a matter of what can we extract from the town? We have, we know we have people who dislike the town for any number of different reasons, but this is beneficial. I mean, the county's looking at better than a quarter of a million dollars in tax revenues on that parcel over 20 years. It's a nice chunk of money for the county, and who knows what will actually be built? You know, they talked about a, a maker center and a grouping session. It might be a small business incubator, you know? How many hours of discussions have gone on in this county about, "Well, there's no jobs. There's nothing for young people. How do you start a business? What do you do this? How do you do that?" Maybe one of the things that comes out of it is a small business incubator, because maybe we've got a high school kid who's got a brilliant idea to make a new software app, but he needs some help, and a business incubator would be the perfect place for him to do that, and then he can stay in the county, and maybe more revenues come because he sets his business up and adds people. So, I think it's very short-sighted of the county to try to do this to the town, and I, and I feel very strongly, as John said, I will say I've got a backbone, and I'm going to stand up and say no to the county. I don't think any of these concessions are reasonable.
All right. I think we have a consensus among the members of the Town Council on this.
You think so?
It would appear so.
Maybe.
I think the, the next step at this point is that we need to have a response to go back. I want to be sensitive to the time and to the timeframe. I don't, and what I would propose is that, that we authorize Mr. Whitehead to work with Mr. Krim to come up with a letter that could go ahead and go out that reflects some of the thoughts that you've heard tonight. Mr. Krim can respond to the legal question that was asked in the second paragraph of Mr. Doherty's letter, and then I would recommend that, that it be signed by all members of the Town Council to reflect the unanimity of the Town Council. Mr. Krim, you gave a look. Is that, it sound all right to you?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I would make that as a motion.
I'll second.
All right. Is there any questions or...
Yeah, I just was going to add, I'd modify, make sure that, and I know Martin will do this when we're talking about it, but just include his legal rationale for why, even though the bond documents don't explain explicitly why we can't, or doesn't say explicitly we can't extend it, but the legal rationale for why we would not choose to do so.
Okay.
Well, and that actually got removed because we, we dealt with the sewer issue outside of all of this.
Well, we've got to answer, I mean...
Okay, yeah.
We're just to answer the question that was proposed in a separate letter from the actual document.
And I have one other question. How speedy are you?
Pretty speedy.
Can you beat, can you beat these guys?
Since I wrote this up over the weekend, I imagine converting it to a document won't be very hard.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Are there any other questions?
No.
If not, approval?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I know there was a question from the public. We're in the middle of an action, so we couldn't take the public at that point. We're going to have a public forum in just a minute. I think this last thing on our agenda should take a very, very short amount of time.
30 seconds.
Which is to update the signatories for the banking accounts.
Right.
Go ahead.
Yes.
And then we'll have a public forum. We'll open back up for, for discussion.
I make a motion to remove Ms. Miriam Kuhn as a signator from the Town of Washington's General Water and Wastewater Bank accounts with Atlantic Union, and to add Mr. Joe Whitehead as a signator to the General Water and Wastewater accounts, and add Brad Schneider, who is already a signator on the Wastewater account, to the General and Water accounts. We therefore will have four people that Barbara can track down to get signs. This action would confirm Mr. Catlin, Mr. Schneider, Ms. Swift, and Mr. Whitehead as signators on the Town of Washington's General Water and Wastewater Bank accounts with Atlantic Union. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Drinks are on me tonight. All right, joke.
All right. All in favor, please indicate by roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
By this, we will all have to get together and go over and sign, so Barbara will coordinate the logistics.
And I'm opening it up for a public forum. Again, the same request that you please use the microphone, that you identify yourself and where you live, and again, I'm opening. Ms. Disarno.
I wasn't exactly certain what you agreed to do at the end. Are you sending your proposal back? You're going to say no to this, but are we then sending to them a simple boundary line adjustment agreement? At the meeting that I attended, there was a lot of sneering by the chief sneer, you can strike that from us, but about how they hadn't heard from us, why weren't we sending a letter to them? And I don't, and I really encourage that we send a very simple letter to them with, that is a simple boundary line adjustment that we've just talked about. Why wait for them to then have another round of angst? So, I wasn't certain if that was a part of your motion, that you would then also send a simple asking their agreement or whatever.
The nature of the motion was for Mr. Whitehead to take the sentiments of the Council and to create a document. I think at that point, Mr., it is a, a letter to respond to Chair Doherty.
Okay, but why aren't we sending our own letter to them? To, about a boundary line adjustment? I don't mean this in the same document.
I don't believe that, and Mr. Krim, you can probably clarify, but I don't believe that we have to send a letter to them. We've acknowledged that in our actions thus far. If anything, I think we probably need to throw it back to the developer and let the developer then work through the, whatever procedure is necessary if they want to continue with it, but it's not really on us to...
It's my understanding that the reason they sent it to you is they wanted you to agree to that, and there would be a joint public hearing on that letter. Why aren't we sending something to them and asking for a joint public hearing on a simple boundary line adjustment? You're letting them into this process because we said no to their letter. Where's our letter saying, "Please..."
Just to clarify language, we're talking about a, a letter separate from a draft boundary line adjustment, and you're saying, "Why don't we send back a draft, our draft of the boundary line adjustment"? What I prepared over the weekend is a red line of their draft, which has strikes essentially all the language we discussed tonight, so... And we're perfectly prepared to share that, I think.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
That was implicit, and I apologize, I didn't make that explicit. That was implicit.
That's a good question. I was unclear about it.
Are there any other questions? You have a certain standard you have to meet, because that was a very good question. You have to meet that standard. If not, then I will close the public forum, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I so move.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call to adjourn?
Yes.
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 Joe?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Thank you. We are adjourned.